Good morning, everyone. This, the Wednesday, August 5th, 2020, meeting of the Nagseth Board of Commissioners is called to order. We'll begin with a moment of silence, and as we do so, and we count ourselves fortunate for minimal disruption and damage from the hurricane, let's remember our friends down in Oak Island, who suffered a fair bit of damage in Vertie County, where there was loss of life and damage. And unrelated, we have our chiefs in the room this morning, the explosion in Beirut yesterday. I'm sure that there were some first responders there, since that was an ongoing fire and quite a tragedy there. So if you'll please join me in just a few moments of silence. And now, as you're able, if you will please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is recognitions, and I think we'll start with introduction of the lifeguards. Chief.
Good morning, Mayor Kahoon, distinguished commissioners. Each year, the town of Nagseth Fire and Ocean Rescue recruits, selects, and trains some of the best lifeguards on the East Coast. This year, the task was challenging, and due to many issues presented to us by COVID-19. This task falls mostly on the shoulders of Captain Chad Motz. It is my pleasure to inform you that he not only rose to the task, he exceeded our expectations. He selected and trained young men and women of character to watch over our citizens and visitors as they enjoy our beaches. Last month, we were going to introduce to you the young women and men that have answered the calling to serve as our lifeguards, but due to pandemic, we had to do a little head fake, and we're going to do that through video. So, as promised, here's a video introducing these extraordinary young people.
Hello, my name is Chad Motz, captain, Nagseth Ocean Rescue. This is my 16th year with the town of Nagseth as captain, 20th year with Nagseth Ocean Rescue overall. My pleasure this morning to introduce our staff of 2020. Without further ado, I'll let my staff introduce themselves. Thank you for your continued support of our ocean rescue program.
Hi, I'm Andy with Nagseth Ocean Rescue. I'm a lifeguard supervisor. I live here in Kill Devil Hills. This is my fifth year working for the organization.
Hi, my name's Chloe. I'm from Virginia. I'm a rising fourth year at UVA, and this is my second year with Nagseth Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name's Coleman Flynn. I'm a third-year lifeguard here at Nagseth, and I'm from Greensboro, North Carolina.
Hi, my name's Riley. This is my rookie year for Nagseth Ocean Rescue, and I'm from Australia.
Hi, my name's Hunter Cox. This is my third year with Nagseth Ocean Rescue. I'm from Chesapeake, Virginia, and I'm a lifeguard supervisor.
Hey, guys, I'm Patrick Keefe from Richmond, Virginia. This will be my rookie year with Nagseth Ocean Rescue, but my seventh year guarding on the Outer Banks.
Hi, my name's Jody Tricky. I'm from Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, and this is my second year with Nagseth Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name's Maggie Wiseman. I'm from Blacksburg, Virginia. This is my third summer down here, and my first year as a lifeguard supervisor.
Hi, my name is Nick Gentry. I'm from Richmond, Virginia, and this is my third year working for Nagseth Ocean Rescue.
My name is Michael Doole. I'm from Richmond, Virginia, and this is my rookie season with Nagseth Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name is Jacob Ramey. I'm from Newport News, Virginia. I'm a lifeguard supervisor for my sixth returning summer here with Nagseth Ocean Rescue, ninth years a lifesaver, and I'm currently a second-degree student at VCU for nursing.
Hi, my name is Danielle Kimball. I'm from Newport News, Virginia. I'm a lifeguard supervisor, and this is my sixth year with Nagseth.
Hi, I'm Peyton Savage. I'm a rising senior at First Flight High School. I'm from Kill Devil Hills, North Carolina. This is my second year at Nagseth Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name is Patrick Trask. I'm from Houston, Texas. This is my rookie year with Nagseth Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name's Kristen. I'm from Northern Virginia. I'm a rising junior at Penn State, and this is my first year with Nagseth Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name's Jessica Ball. I'm from Northern Virginia, and this is my second year with Nagseth Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name is Caroline Jarvis. This is my fourth year with Nagseth Ocean Rescue, and I'm from Manio, North Carolina.
Hi, I'm Natasha Schwartzkopf. I'm from South Africa, and this is my first year at Nagseth Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name's Erin Bimbridge. I live in Kitty Hawk, North Carolina, and this is my second year with Nagseth Ocean Rescue.
I'm Mandy Tedy. I'm from Richmond, Virginia, and this is my third year with Ocean Rescue.
Hi, I'm Brett Cox. I'm from Chesapeake, Virginia. This is my first year with Nagseth Ocean Rescue.
Hi, I'm Kelsey Charbonneau. This is my second year with Nagseth Ocean Rescue, and I'm from Virginia.
My name's Sean Kenny. I was born and raised on the Outer Banks, and this is my 10th year working Ocean Rescue.
Hi, my name's Carrie. I'm from Virginia. I'm a junior at George Mason University, and this is my first year with Nagseth Ocean Rescue.
Hey, y'all. My name's Bryce Green. I'm from Manio, North Carolina. I'm a supervisor with Nagseth Ocean Rescue, and this is my seventh year.
Hey, I'm Matt McDonald. I'm from Chesapeake, Virginia, and this is my first year with Nagseth Ocean Rescue.
Our community is home to one of the best small beach ocean rescue teams in the Southeast United States. Thanks to the support we receive from the town of Nagseth and its Board of Commissioners, I want to encourage people to meet our ocean rescue members, stop by a lifeguard stand and ask about today's conditions before hitting the water. Also, be sure everyone in your group knows what rip currents are and how to escape them before heading out to the beach. As we say here in Dare County, love the beach, respect the ocean.
Thank you, Chief, and to Chad, and to everyone who helped put that video together. We do have a great crew. You're probably aware, I know the commissioners are aware, that we've gotten several comments through the town's comment portal, complimenting our lifeguards and remarking on some of the work that they've been doing on the beach this summer, and that's, they're, they're indeed an outstanding group. So, thanks to you and Chad and everyone who's involved. Commissioners?
Can I comment? Okay. And I'd just like to say one thing. Chief, just hats off to Chad Motz. I've seen him for many years put together just a great, great team. One of the comments that we got recently, last week, I believe it was, was just how he went kind of above and beyond to serve some of the visitors that were here to our area. What I think Chad, where he gains respect from his people, is that he's out there on the ground, working alongside his fellow lifeguards. He's not sitting in the office listening to the radio. He's out there working. I've seen that many times throughout the years, and again, I thank him and the other lifeguards for the job that they do.
And I'd just like to echo that and just say one other thing. Other than the chief, I don't understand how all the lifeguards continue to look younger every year.
Indeed. Yeah, it's pretty remarkable.
No, no, I mean, they do a wonderful job. I'm out there a lot, and I really appreciate your leadership, and Chad especially, but thank you a lot for everything they do.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Ralph recognize some folks from Public Works.
As you can tell, I'm not Ralph.
No.
I'm Charlie Bliven with the Town of Nagseth, Fleet Maintenance Garage, and I'm here to introduce Jason Brickhouse for five years of service. Came to us in May of 2015. He's been a big asset. He hit the ground running. He can weld, diagnose, do wiring, and all that kind of good stuff, help keep the fleet running. He likes to boat, hunt, fish, anything with four wheels and an engine. Jason Brickhouse, everybody.
Thank you very much.
Great.
Good morning, Mike Norris, Facilities Maintenance. This morning, I'd like to introduce Russell, five years. Russell, in his spare time, likes to enjoy spending time with his wife and two children. He's a tech two with Facilities Maintenance and has developed into a team leader. He contributes with his excessive knowledge in building and manages his time well. He went, he worked with staff in developing and implementing a cutting schedule for the town's parks and rightaways. He has also been instrumental in developing and implementing maintenance schedules for Doughty's Park and landscaping and turf maintenance. Russell carries himself in a very confident manner, contributing to the town and our team. Russell's always thinking about strategies and how to improve our procedures in communicating them to the staff. Russell Cantor, five years.
Thank you.
Go one more time, Anthony. Anthony Beasley, as with sanitation, he's a 10-year veteran. He's actually worked here for 17 years, took a little break in between, but Anthony is a car enthusiast. He enjoys his spare time at the racetrack. Anthony is an operator two in the sanitation department and is instrumental in our day-to-day operation. With Anthony's depth and knowledge of the town's residential and commercial routes, his ability to alternate between duties is a great value to us. He has evolved into a team leader through all the changes we've been going through and is very much so a value to us. He's always eager to give and receive input on the continued development of processes, and he is a pleasure to work with. Anthony Beasley.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason, and Russell, and Anthony, for all your years of service to the town. We appreciate you all and the hard work you all do, especially over the last couple of weeks, the way it's been. I know it's been tough out there, and we really appreciate everything that you all do. Make the town look great. Thank you.
Mr. Alvarez. Please. Yes. Morning, Mayor, Commissioners. It's been a little bit since we've been up here, so it's good to be here this morning. Thank you for recognizing Mike Alvarez for his five years of service to the town of Nagseth and the Police Department. Mike started with the department in July 2015 as a patrol officer, came to us with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and forensic science from East Carolina University. He's expressed an interest in criminal investigations, and in February 2020, he applied for an open position, was selected. Mike was transferred to criminal investigations, where he has proven himself to be quite an asset. Mike has already distinguished himself as an investigator. One of his first cases involved a shoplifting ring. Basically, the ring stole $4,000 worth of product from Ulta. Mike utilized several investigative tools, including various databases, social media, and outside agency partnerships. Mike located the suspects in Norfolk, Virginia, and filed charges against them. Mike is engaged to his fiancee, Andy Grace, and his hobbies include cooking and gardening. And if you caught him in action in last year's Christmas party, you know he likes to dance. Mike Alvarez. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. And I'm going to turn over this to public comment to Mr. Leidy, and I have some gifts I need to convey to these folks. Excuse me. So, John?
At this time, I want to open the public comment section. This is an opportunity for members of the public to comment to the Board of Commissioners regarding matters of public interest. It's not an opportunity for dialogue with the board. The board rarely responds to public comment, but it's an opportunity to share thoughts and ideas and concerns with the Board of Commissioners. For those of you who wish to comment, if you will please approach the podium, start by telling us who you are and where you live, and then approach, I'm sorry, then address your comments to the board as a whole. Do we have anybody who wishes to provide public comment? There being none, we will close the public comment section.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda. It's a fairly lengthy one, but you've had it for review, so a motion would be in order on the consent agenda.
We have to adopt the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you.
Can I?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to ask a question, though. We have approved the consent agenda, and I know DOT has approved the 45-mile speed limit on the causeway. Who then becomes responsible for changing the speed limit signs, and at what point does that occur?
Somebody from planning want to speak to that. I know that we have a traffic control map.
It's DOT's responsibility to change the signs, and of course, that letter said everything had been done. I noticed on the consent agenda that we're adopting it, but it also talked about that it's not in effect until the signs are erected.
Exactly. So there's no timeline for DOT to erect those new stops, those new speed limit signs. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Well, then, let's ask the town manager, if you would, to please follow up with DOT so that those signs are erected as soon as possible. There's no reason at this point. Putting up signs is not that hard, and we do have some season left, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
So the next item is a public hearing, and John and Michael, I believe, will be up for this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will move on to the public hearing to consider the revised preliminary plat for a major subdivision known as Coastal Villas for approximately 11.17 acre property zone, hard to read, a dense residential that is owned by Nagseth Construction, which is the Apple. It's located on the west side of US 158, approximately 10,000 feet south, at the intersection with West Soundside Road and US 158. The revised preliminary plat goes to 17 building lots, along with an associated street and other required improvements, and requires a public hearing due to requests and waivers. With regards to the request and waivers, that matter is something that the board needs to consider as a quasi-judicial matter, and as such, there are special rules and requirements that apply to the hearing. First, the board's decision regarding the request for waivers must be based on material, competent, and relevant evidence. For that reason, all those who will be presenting evidence regarding this application to the board or against it must be sworn by the town clerk. In addition, the procedures that apply require that evidence be presented and that the board's decision be based only on the evidence that's presented during the hearing today. Also, when a public board sits as a quasi-judicial panel to consider this type of matter, it is imperative that no member participate in or vote on any quasi-judicial matter in any manner that would violate any affected person's constitutional rights to an impartial decision maker. Impermissible violations of due process include, but are not limited to, a member having a fixed opinion prior to the hearing on the matter that is not susceptible to change, undisclosed ex parte communications, and having a close financial, business, or familial association or relationship with an affected person or a financial interest in the outcome of the matter. Previously undisclosed ex parte communications, which have not caused you to develop a fixed opinion, may be cured through disclosure of the facts or information obtained on the record. A party or a member of council, including the council member in issue, may object to any member's participation for lack of impartiality. If an objection is raised to a member's participation, and that member does not choose to refuse themselves, the remaining members of the board shall by majority vote rule on the objection. So at this time, I ask whether any of you have any conflicts which would prevent you from being an impartial decision maker in this matter, or has anyone received any undisclosed communications or information that need to be disclosed at this time?
I've talked with several residents in the South Ridge subdivision about this development, but that's it.
Will you be able to make your decision based only on the evidence that was presented during this hearing today?
I will.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
No.
Finally, as we begin the hearing, I'm going to ask that all of those who will be presenting evidence, if you will please approach the town clerk so that she may administer the oath, and then we'll begin with the evidentiary presentations.
Do we need to do a better job of social distancing for things?
Yeah. I don't want to sit there and do this. Bible on the stick.
Is that it? Sir? Yeah. Okay. Did you want to speak, sir, during the public hearing? No? Okay. Okay. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony, you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so I'll be glad. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we'll begin with the presentation of the staff's analysis, considering the planning and the record, Martin Zener.
Good morning. The board recalls, I'm sure, that this came before you on January 8th, 2020. Let me bring up the plan that's before you today. The plan that came before you in January, as you might recall, provided access, vehicular access, to the subdivision solely through the interior of South Ridge off of Seabass Court through a paper right-of-way known as Mariner's Way. And following discussion at that meeting, the board directed staff, or they tabled a consideration of the preliminary plat that was presented that day, and directed staff to work with the developer, but also the owners of the properties along Fourth Street, which is down here, to redesign this, to essentially provide access off of 158. Ideally, I think the board was looking for singular access to serve this property and perhaps also Fourth Street. So we subsequently met with the developer, or had conversations with the developer, with the owner of the Fourth Street properties. We know they had conversations as well. We coordinated a joint meeting between the parties, and ultimately, the developer of this property submitted this revised, or a plan that was consistent with this revised plan, which provided access to 17 building lots off of 158 with the new street. The plan hasn't changed appreciably, other than the access, other than the fact that they have provided this new street that will terminate at the common property line and allow a future connection to Fourth Street, which is something that we understand that these property owners, or the owner of these properties, will likely pursue at some point in the future. They're providing a cul-de-sac that extends beyond the right-of-way. They commit to retain that cul-de-sac. There would be easements put in place on the affected lots, but they would retain that cul-de-sac until it was deemed no longer necessary by the town if there was a connection through that didn't require that turnaround. Following the planning board, so we did have this redesign go back to the planning board, and they recommended approval of that. However, there was a question presented at the planning board meeting, wondering how, and I believe it was approximately nine acres, slightly more, how, at the time, this parcel was created. So we went back and reviewed the record, and it actually was the entire tract here that I'm outlining that was created in, I believe, 2000, and it was a future phase of the South Ridge phases that are to the west, so the northernmost phases of South Ridge. And then, in 2003, 2004, this property here was transferred by deed to Dare County as a future well production site for the reverse osmosis plant. That deed transfer was in December of 2003. In February of 2004, this board, the Board of Commissioners, approved a preliminary plat with waivers to subdivide this parcel from the larger tract. There was no plan to subdivide these lots at that time, and that required waivers because of this lot not having frontage on any new road and having direct access through an easement to 158. So we worked with the applicant and their attorneys and the town's attorneys, and determined that despite the preliminary plat being approved, despite the waivers being approved, there was no final plat that had been approved within 12 months following the approval of that preliminary plat. And so therefore, we did not feel that the property, that this parcel was properly subdivided from the larger tract of record. So we communicated that to the applicant. They agreed. They could not find any record where that plat had been finally approved. They coordinated with Dare County, and there's a copy of a letter in the materials allowing the applicant to proceed with Dare County's, on Dare County's behalf, but essentially, they've rolled this parcel, this lot, into the subdivision. That's why it's now showing as 11.17 acres rather than previously nine and some change. And they're also requesting waivers, which is the reason for this public hearing, waivers that were granted before, as well as one additional one we identified related, again, to access and frontage. Bear with me one second. So those waivers would be from Section 10.46 of the UDO. Access to public street or highway required. There shall be no subdivision of any tract of land which does not have access to a public street or highway. Section 10.47, limiting access to US 158 from any new lot and a new residential subdivision of land. Essentially, there should be no direct access to 158. Section 10.68.1, frontage. All lots in a subdivision must front a street. Section 10.68.3, minimum amount of frontage. All lots shall be designed so that they shall front on a public street for a distance of not less than 50 feet. So this parcel, again, does not meet those standards. All of the other parcels in the subdivision do meet those standards. They have included a note on the first sheet. You won't be able to read it here, but I believe you have your full size, but I think it's Note 19, which basically indicates that the waivers and staff would request that the final plat just indicate all sections that are being waived with respect to the lot, but also indicates that Lot A2, which is this lot, is reserved for a well production site for the Dare County reverse osmosis plant. So it's not a buildable lot, and the record should reflect that it would not have rights as a buildable lot. So I believe that's perhaps the remainder. I don't know that I have anything additional to add. They are continuing to propose the through connection from the multi-use path that's now been constructed that would allow for pedestrian access to Seabass Court. We did hear from this property owner here prior to the planning board. They just wished for that. Formerly, it was along the property line, and they wondered if it could meander off the line, which the applicant's done, recognizing that they want to preserve these trees that are in this area here, and they believe they can do that, and they'll present further designs for that when they present construction documents. I should mention, we did receive an email forwarded by the applicant from NC DOT last week, where NC DOT did indicate that they would have no issues approving this regardless of what occurs, if the connection occurs with Fourth Street, which they related. They also indicated that they would approve with restrictions to write-in, write-out only, which I indicated in my staff report. So as far as we are aware, there's no other non-compliance issues with this subdivision despite the waivers, and the planning board recommended approval with the requisite findings for the waivers, and staff would also recommend approval.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Zener?
Mr. Zener, you said that DOT said write-in, write-out. How are you going, how's that going to be enforced?
For Fourth Street?
What about the other? I mean, that's a blind intersection that's less than three, what's 300 feet away from Soundside Road.
So that intersection would not be write-in, write-out only. That would be a full movement intersection according to DOT, but ultimately, you're not necessarily approving the design of that intersection. That would be subject to DOT's permitting process following this and prior to the issuance of a final plat approval.
I think that should be considered, because you already have issues with Soundside Road, and then if Fourth Street comes in, you're less than 200 feet from Dearing Street. You're not given much visibility for two turnout sections in an area that is known to be 60 miles an hour, even though it's not posted at 60 miles an hour.
There's no consideration, as far as I'm aware, in the subdivision regulations for the review of compliance with DOT standards of an intersection on a DOT-controlled street. They're subject to permitting requirements, presumably. Hypothetically, if they were not able to get the permit from DOT following the approval of the preliminary plat, they would have to redesign the project and come back. of the preliminary plat, they would have to redesign the project and come back.
I didn't see any, I see where there's a variance for drainage easement on the north end of Lot 17, but currently, there's a ditch that is substantial enough that the walkpath had to have a bridge built over it in that area. I don't see where any of that's going to be addressed for 17 or 16, and as you know, we have current neighborhoods that those weren't addressed on, and now we're having problems that we have to go back and fix, once development has been completed of those subdivisions.
Maybe I'm not following the question.
To the northeast corner of Lot 17, on the sidewalk that we put in recently, there is standing water in that area for drainage. You have a drainage easement, but how are, how is the developer looking to, based on topographical map back here, there is some elevation difference, but how are they going to maintain that once all the waterways throughout the subdivision have been changed through development? How is that going to not become a problem that we have to deal with five or six or seven years down the road?
So I would either defer that question to Kathleen Saunders with Quivell, or Town Engineer David Ryan.
Any other questions for Michael?
Yeah, I got another. So in review of this, I know it goes through the fire department, the police department, et cetera, and so forth, and this layout, under the approval process, was the best, most efficient way for everybody to get to Bass Court, Ridgeview Way, et cetera, and so forth, for an emergency situation?
Well, I don't know.
If this doesn't help that situation, I mean, those folks still have to drive five minutes to get out of the neighborhood.
So we weren't, we weren't making that determination. We were reviewing compliance of the plan that was submitted, and if I recall, it was the vote, unanimous vote of the board to redesign more consistent with what's before the board today versus a design that provided access through Seabass Court. I think the previous plan, I don't believe Emergency Services had any issues with service to the subdivision accessing through the interior of the subdivision, and they've not expressed any concerns with the suitability of this subdivision from an Emergency Services standpoint. But they're not making a judgment call. We're not in a position of being able to say, well, we prefer one versus the other. It's determining whether or not what's before us, what's been submitted, complies with the regulations.
Commissioner, could I?
Just to follow up on Commissioner, Mayor Protem's serious question about right-in, right-out. We have required other areas that fronted on 158 to have a right-in, right-out. Why would this be any different?
DOT hasn't indicated that they would require this to be right-in, right-out.
So there's a difference, then, between driveways and rights-of-way with regard to what the town can require?
I don't see any regulation in, for a new street in the subdivision regulations where we can restrict the traffic movement, the turning movements, out of this subdivision on a, on a NC DOT-controlled street.
We did great.
Done it. We have done it.
I mean, we've done it on commercial sites.
I mean, done it where, if you will, coming out of Food Line on Riceville, from Food Line to Riceville, and made that street a one-way and put a block so nobody could turn there at one point in time. I'm not saying.
With Admiral?
I don't know what the name of the road is.
They were town streets.
Which is Town Street, correct.
I'm not saying we did it right. I'm just saying we did it.
Right.
We've also done it in, where Staples is, coming out onto 158. My well-bone surf shop, that's a right-in, right-out.
That's a driveway, not a street.
Yeah.
I think, I think my concern on the turnout is, if you're going to be coming out of a lower elevation onto the highway, and it's already a blind spot in that particular area with the way, the rate that speed is traveling, I just don't want to create a safety issue with somebody pulling out of there.
Yeah, I understand. I would tell you, again, if there were a restriction and there were a physical impediment, it would have to be located in DOT right-of-way. I, I would have to defer to DOT on that. I mean, if that's something that you wish staff to explore further, we would need to review that further, maybe discuss with town attorney, in terms of whether or not we can do something like that, and we can request that.
So you're saying we can't do it because it's a state highway, going out onto a state highway?
I don't know that you can do it, because I don't believe there's any regulations to tie it to in the subdivision regulations. I'm not aware of any provision in the subdivision regulations that would allow you, you could determine that supposedly, you could determine that there's a safety issue that would require that, but based on, on what? We haven't received any evidence that there is that issue.
Has there been a traffic study done?
They're not required to submit a traffic study as part of the subdivision regulation.
Then you'll never know if there's an issue, until it happens.
One, one answer we may have is, if, if there's no willingness to discuss this further by anybody, is, once we assume the road and the right-of-way, then we can go in and put what traffic measures we think are important on our street. It might be after the fact, but we might be able to look at that. I would turn to the attorney and ask if that's the question. If we see, once, once the right-of-way is dedicated to the public and accepted by the board, then it becomes our responsibility for doing what we think is appropriate in terms of traffic control. And I'm phrasing that in the form of a question to the attorney.
I think that's only with regard to the restrictions placed on the town, on, on the road controlled by the town. Towns does not control the state highway, and the question would be whether the controls apply to the state highway or to the town streets.
But if we wanted, we could pass an ordinance that requires right turn only off of that road.
Because that would be the town street.
Off of the town street. I mean, it's, it's a question.
I'm not, I don't know whether you could do that after you approved the subdivision plan.
I, just thinking on that, you may be able to sign out that there are no left turns allowed out within the town's right-of-way, but there could not, there quite possibly wouldn't be any signage, or, excuse me, any physical impediment in the DOT right-of-way to enforce that.
Yeah, I wouldn't ask that. I was just saying what we, what we could do on our street.
Sure.
Because you could place that at the town's right-of-way.
I mean, it's not the good answer, but it's a possible answer.
Right.
Other questions for, yes, sir?
I do have a few. Is there an HOA for this subdivision?
There would be, there, and they've presented covenant documents for that.
Okay. Who would be responsible for the improvement of the walk access, particularly that that goes from Seabass Court to the, the proposed subdivision? In other words, it's a section of right-of-way that's not part of this subdivision. So, and it says on there, unimproved. So who would be responsible for improving that?
So the applicant has indicated that they will be constructing that entire section of improvement, and then through to the path on 158.
So, so that should be part of the approval process, that if we do approve this, that that would be a specific part of the approval process?
I mean, it's, it's demonstrated on the plans. I'm confident that it is part of the plans that have been presented.
Is it in the covenants?
Uh, which, well, maybe which part is in the covenants?
The maintenance of that extra paper street to be now a sidewalk?
They would not be maintaining the, the pathway. That would be conveyed to the town through an easement, once they constructed it.
To the town and not the HOA?
Correct.
Well, if it were an HOA, it would have to be the HOA of the existing subdivision. I mean, that, that section occurs outside of the subdivision that we're reviewing.
So maybe there's a couple of different questions, and maybe my answer confused it. So the developer is going to construct the multi-use path connection. It is proposed to be through this section within an easement. That easement will be conveyed to the town, so the town will own, once constructed, that section of multi-use path. The developer would also construct the multi-use path within this section of unimproved right-of-way, which the town already owns. It's already been conveyed to the town. And so, once they construct it, it's constructed improvements within the town right-of-way for the benefit of the town, for the benefit of the public. So the HOA will have no responsibility because of the conveyance, because of the current right-of-way. The HOA has no responsibility for that section of pathway.
I still have more, but if you're following up on some, on part.
So will that pathway be constructed to town standards?
Yes. They're gonna, it would presumably be covered within their construction documents, and they actually, the reason they presented this in, originally, was because we presented them with a specification from the town's pedestrian plan.
Okay. Are we talking about a hard material such as asphalt or concrete, or are we talking about wood?
No, it would, it would be hard material.
Like asphalt?
Concrete or asphalt, yes.
Okay. The next thing is, just access to A2 by a motorized vehicle. How does a motorized vehicle access A2?
So.
It's a 20-foot easement.
Originally, they had conveyed, let me see which sheet it's best represented on. Originally, this easement was conveyed, and this exists. They were intending to access from, through that easement, and I believe they are proposing to put in additional easement that would allow them to access across this lot, across Lot 15, off of the new street.
It, it says proposed, but what's the difference in proposed and a 20-foot wide access easement?
Proposed, how do you mean?
I mean, proposed to me sounds like this is something they might propose, but it might not happen.
So we included as a condition, and I should have referenced this, but we included three conditions, the first of which, excuse me, the third of which is, prior to or in conjunction with approval of the final plat, for the subdivision drainage easements to be the responsibility of the applicant, developer, and/or their successors, as well as easements to be conveyed to the town in Dare County, shall be properly conveyed by recordation with the Dare County Register of Deeds. And it goes on, but, so they would have to record that proposed easement prior to the approval of the final plat.
So that is a condition?
Yes, sir. A recommended condition, yes.
Okay. The next, can you explain to me what OS number one and OS number two is?
Uh, the OS is open space, and they are reserved for easements, excuse me, stormwater improvements. Uh, let's see, you can see them best here, the grading, where they would be essentially function as ponds, but I can, I would defer to Kathleen Saunders to discuss how they would function and how they may appear, but I would imagine they're going to be grassed generally. It's an infiltration basin. I would imagine it's generally going to be a dry basin, except when there's periods of rainfall. And they've designed the subdivision, or the drainage for the subdivision to comply with town, but also state requirements, which will be subject to a state permit prior to the final plat as well.
I guess, then the question would be, is it part of their drainage and stormwater plan?
It is, and those lots, OS one and OS two, would be conveyed to the homeowners eventually as well.
The, the point being is, if it's part of the drainage and stormwater, I expect all the counts to be correct, and that y'all would have reviewed that, and that somebody's responsible for maintaining those.
The, the counts, the calculations?
The calculations.
Yeah, the town engineer reviewed these, and I believe I referenced any remaining comments that he had in my report, but I believe anything significant had been resolved, especially with respect to drainage. And again, it would be subject to a state permit as well, which they would be required to receive prior to our approval of any local land disturbance permits.
Just a couple of little things that probably make no difference, but on page two, looking at Lot 17, just appears that the, I don't have a ruler or any measuring device, but I think drain fields have to be a certain distance from a drainage easement, and just by the naked eye, it doesn't appear that that drain field would meet the requirements from the health department.
That's true.
That's just a point. And then another point that I just want to make, to make sure everybody knows, we did receive a letter from a property owner in the adjoining, or the previous subdivision of Seabass Court, talking about density, which this is not a density change, but also talking about the fact that a lot of this will block his view, and I just want to make it very clear that there's nothing in our ordinance about blocking people's view.
It's also not a rezoning.
Right. It's not a rezoning. There's no density change, change, and we don't have anything in our ordinance that talks about blocking people's view that I know of.
Any other questions for Mr. Zena?
I'll make just an observation, if I may, regarding the walkway in the, in the right-of-way that we discussed earlier, that they will build, and the town will, will be to the town standards. There's a similar condition in Old Nag's Head Place, where there's a walkway that leads to a beach access that's heavily landscaped and requires irrigation, and I would just argue for a more naturalistic treatment of this area, so that it's less of a maintenance issue than, that's a very heavy, that's a heavy maintenance issue there. That's all.
And the HOA maintained, sir?
Okay.
The town does not maintain that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything further for Mr. Zena? Ms. Saunders, do you have any questions for Mr. Zena? Anything further before we hear from the applicant? All right. Thank you, Mr. Zena.
Good morning, and thank you for having me. My name is Kathleen Saunders, and I'm with Quivell and Associates. We have laid out the different variations of this site. The one that you have before you today, we would be served by Nag's Head Water. The water would go through public water supply permitting. We would have onsite septic, as you see, and then stormwater, and it was an important issue. We have four infiltration basins that are shown throughout the development, and as was discussed, we have one that's in the rear here that collects the coverage from these lots, and then we have one back here that would collect the coverage from these lots. And then, these are interconnected with a pipe, so if there's more runoff over here for some reason, the basins would be interconnected, and they would equalize each other. We also have a larger basin in open space number two that was discussed, that collects everything from this side of the development, or this corner, and then we have another open space area number one that would collect everything from this corner of the development. These are also interconnected through a pipe, and this open space number one would overflow to another basin here, and then ultimately into the ditch if it couldn't handle the storm that comes. I will say that we will be permitting stormwater through the state, which is an inch and a half. However, we are meeting. half, however, we are meeting town requirements for stormwater, and we are about a two and a half inches, um, retained on-site. Um, something else we did for stormwater was we have determined that we will be able to route the post-development back to the pre-developed flow, so nothing new would be going off the site, actually, less would be going off the site than is today. So, that might address the question about the ditch right here, um, as, as far as it being wet. We would not be impacting it as far as putting additional flow into it, because it would be less than it is now, based on the modeling and the assumptions that have been made. And, those would be infiltration basins, so they would be grassed, um, and they would typically draw down within a couple, couple of hours, maybe a day, uh, depending on the size storm that comes. Are there any other technical questions related to the plat that you guys have?
May?
Any questions?
Um, particularly as it relates to the two basins on the west side lots eight through 15, um, those two lots, yes?
These two.
Um, is there anything in here that says who is responsible for maintenance of those?
That is within the restrictive covenant, so those would be maintained by the HOA. Actually, all four of them would be maintained by the HOA.
Okay, thank you.
As a follow-up, um, would there be any deed restrictions stating for those homeowners that are going to buy these properties, that they cannot be filled or modified?
Yes, there will be deed restrictions for all of the lots, um, which would restrict the built bond area, um, on each of the individual lots to what they're allowed. Uh, we would document that when we go through our permitting process with the state.
Uh, any other questions?
Do you know the elevation of the Highway 158 in relation to the elevation that you have on here?
I can't read it up there. It looks like it's around a five, based on what I have on the plat. Um, the roadway comes up to about an eight. Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, so, because you've got the corners marked on all of them at five, where the road is at five foot roughly?
That's, um, the ditch, the flow line within the ditch.
Okay.
So, you have the ditch, and then you have, um, I think it's a three to one slope up to the shoulder.
Thank you.
Sorry, six to one.
Yes, I have a question. I'm looking closely at the grading where the street intersects 158. Um, and there's quite a bit of grading there. I take it to bring that street up to, to 158, and it appears that those grading lines then cross the new multi-use path there, and I don't see a note that says that's being reconstructed unless I missed it.
It is, uh, we'll go into greater detail when we do the construction plans, but, um, you can kind of see on this plan where it's bolder.
Yes, okay.
Um, and where it's bolder back here. We will have to rip out this section of sidewalk and relay it so that we can meet ADA requirements, um, the slope on that sidewalk. So, that would be removed and replaced in order to meet appropriate grades.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Saunders? Zener, you have any questions for Ms. Saunders? Ms. Saunders, do you have any other evidence to present?
No, I do not.
Does the board wish to receive any other, uh, evidence from Ms. Saunders at this time? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't believe anyone else was sworn to present evidence on this, is that correct? That, or is it?
Correct.
Does the board wish to receive any other evidence on this before you begin your deliberations? Whether it's for Mr. Zener or for Ms. Saunders?
I have a question perhaps for you. Um, we're approving a set of waiver, waivers and a subdivision. We do those as two separate steps?
I think, yes, sir, I think you should do them as two separate steps, because, and I think you should take the waivers first.
Yes, sure.
Because without the approval of the waivers, I don't think you would approve the subdivision plan.
Right.
So, yes, I do propose that you receive.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, the board doesn't need to receive any other evidence. At this time, we will conclude the evidentiary presentation, and you may begin your deliberations.
Okay. Um, I will start on that end. Michael? Comments, um, questions, discussion?
None.
Okay. Thank you. Renee?
Kevin?
Will? Very good. If there's not any discussion, then a motion on the waivers would be in order to approve or disapprove the waivers.
Do we have to state each individual waiver?
Unless it's, unless it's as presented, I think it probably, well, it probably would be best to pass on each individual waiver, yes, sir.
Um, I can't make a motion, because I can't remember all of them.
This would be in the report.
I mean, if somebody could help me and make sure that the proposed 20-foot wide access easement to A2 is included in that.
Um, so that wouldn't need to be included, because it's part of the plan, but the waivers would be from Section 10.46, Section 10.47, Section 10.68.1, and Section 10.68.3, and I would recommend that you condition those waivers or apply a condition to any action that required the applicant to amend the note, Note 19 on Sheet 1 to be inclusive of all of those sections.
I understand where the, the waivers come from, but do we have to state the waiver specifically, not where they came from?
I refer to Zener's whether a motion to waive the requirements of specific ordered sections, if that would be sufficient to allow the, if you give the waivers that are requested by the applicant?
Yes.
Would that specify or delineate what the waiver means, just referring to the code section?
Uh, I believe so. Um, there, 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 all of those provisions deal with direct access to 158, direct access to a roadway, and frontage requirements with respect to Lot A2.
So, if, if I may, just, um, so waiving Section 10.46 allows that lot to exist without access to the public street?
That's correct.
That's, uh, waiver of Section 10.47 allows, um, access from Highway 158?
It precludes direct access to a lot, so they're, they're seeking that ability with for Lot A2.
Okay. Um, waiver of Section 10.68.1 waives the frontage requirement, so that lot can exist coming to a point essentially at the right-of-way, rather than having any amount of frontage.
It actually doesn't have any frontage. They, they, there's a small line there.
Yes, okay, right. So, to have...
That's correct.
Uh, no frontage, um, and to waive, uh, minimum amount of frontage.
Yes, of 50 feet.
This is a question of the attorney. I know where you're going, but can we make the motion by referencing the four points that are listed on Page 3 of the staff's, uh, report, or should we just read the entire thing?
No, I thi, I think the motion could be to waive the requirements of code sections 10.46, 10.47, 10.68 dot 1, and 10.68 dot 3. I think that, that reference would be sufficient.
Just that reference would be sufficient?
Yes, sir.
I'll try, I'll make a motion that we approve waivers for the proposed subdivision, those waivers being specifically related to Section 10.46, 10.47, 10.68.1, 10.68.3.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the waivers, um, as you heard. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the subdivision plat?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to approve the subdivision plat as presented?
Yes.
Don't want to make sure that they're not forgotten, staff's recommended conditions, the three conditions recommended.
Would you amend your motion?
Amend it to include?
To include staff?
Recommendations from staff?
Yes. I have a motion and a second to approve the subdivision with those conditions recommended by staff. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Thank you. The next item on our agenda, um, Michael, would be reports and recommendations from the planning board and the planning and development director.
Thank you again. So, there were a few things with my director's report, and I'm happy to go over anything included or not included, but, um, there were a few things that I wanted to bring to your attention. Those were the skate park with the potential grant application, and I'll go over that specifically, uh, the residential stormwater regulations, and then the RFQ for the update of the decentralized wastewater management plan. I also wanted to mention, not referenced in here, I hope everyone has had a chance to see, uh, the Destination Dare video that was shared to the town Facebook regarding the septic health and stormwater program. It's, I believe, three to, to, to five-minute video, and I think it was very well done, and it's, um, a great representation of, of the work that the department does. And then, um, also, report that mailers have gone out with respect to the CRS program. There was a combined mailer for CRS, but also stormwater, uh, and a separate mailer that was sent regarding the septic health program. And then finally, uh, with respect to the next planning board meeting, and I'll go back to the other items, um, I did want to mention that we expect an additional item, a text amendment to, um, change or really add in a provision that would allow for fill to be added to lots that are west of 12 or 1243, um, up to the point that is allowed by the Dare or required essentially by the Dare County Health Department. Formerly, that provision was not in the ordinance, and therefore was not in the rewrite of the ordinance, but we've recognized that there's an impact because of the reduction in the BFE in those AE zones, uh, with them being significantly less, that in cases, uh, especially in South Nags Head, we can expect that, uh, the Dare County Health Department may require more fill than the BFE is currently set. So, we feel like this is something that needs to be acted on fairly quickly. We're going to add it to the planning board's agenda in August. Uh, that would be on your consent agenda in September, uh, and then public hearing in October, uh, unless, uh, the board wanted to, uh, consider scheduling a public hearing for the September meeting on that.
Yes, Renee?
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
Um, as it relates to that increased fill, is there going to be any consideration of stormwater plans as it's going to impact all the neighbors?
There always, there always would be. Uh, they, those projects would generally require a stormwater plan. Um, the, the one instance that this has come up with, it's, I believe, a half-foot higher than the BFE, and we're talking about a BFE of, I believe, four, uh, and the project needing to add maybe, I believe, two, two and a half feet of fill to that lot, um, and they're still meeting, there, it's a tight fit, but they're still meeting, uh, the five-foot no-fill setback, uh, and they would be subject to a stormwater plan. But, um, we don't want to preclude the development of any lots because of this, uh, reduction of the BFE and cap currently at, at maximizing fill for those lots.
Michael, can you explain what that fill would have been allowed to be before our new base flood elevation?
Hypothetically, um, that lot either was an 11 or a 10. BFE now is a four, uh, so it would be that difference hypothetically, but you would have never have met the required side slopes and five-foot setback. So, I, I don't know, um, what the functional maximum would have been for that lot, but it could have been greater than four. And I think this is just, um, clearly, uh, something that, um, was unanticipated, and hopefully this closes that.
Can, can we move that? I mean, do y'all have any objection moving that to September for public hearing?
I don't. I don't. No. So, I don't know if that requires a motion, but, um, we, the board would accept, um, that on...
On the September agenda.
The September agenda.
Yeah, I think it would require a motion, uh, to schedule a public hearing.
Make the motion to schedule a public hearing on that matter for September. Okay.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. So, the, the other three items that I called out, uh, we are working on a national endowment for the arts. Um, our town grant application, it's actually due tomorrow, uh, and given that, um, and given that it's a local match requirement, uh, we wanted to at least make you aware of that. Didn't want to commit the town to anything without bringing that forward to you first. This grant would essentially be for the skate park, for renovation of the skate park, but this would be for the design, uh, of plans for that future renovation. This was essentially a CIP project, uh, where we were looking at two phases, perhaps a design-build, and now we're, we're attempting to separate that out and, and looking for other funding sources, um, at least for the design, and then maybe in the future look for funding, um, whether local or, or grant funding for construction. But, we're estimating, um, $30,000, uh, so there would be a local match required of $15,000 if we were successful. Of course, the town could decide, even if we were successful, that we didn't want to pursue that. So, um, allowing us to submit the grant application today doesn't necessarily commit us, uh, to that $15,000. We could always, again, reject the grant if we were, were successful.
I don't recall. What, what was this budgeted for in the CIP?
I believe, um, that each phase we were looking at for, and it was design-build, we were looking at 90 to 120,000 for each phase.
Thank you. Questions, Mr. ...
Uh, we are working with, again, Dare County Arts Council. Uh, they require a nonprofit partner, so we're looking to kind of create a, and we've talked with Arts and Culture about this, kind of a, a project that, um, deals with public art and recreation at the same time. Next topic was the residential stormwater regulations. Uh, the board had indicated at their last meeting that they believe that the recommendations that came from the planning board and staff, uh, and, and a broader discussion should be discussed at a workshop. Uh, we wanted to just generally, uh, get any feedback from the board in terms of a timeline for that, if there's things that you'd like us to be preparing, and we also recalled that there was a discussion about... And we also recalled that there was a discussion about potentially having a third-party peer reviewer, and there could be, and also, I guess, finally, the planning board had indicated their interest in participating in that workshop with the commissioners. One option could be that we could look to engage a third-party peer reviewer to help coordinate and facilitate that workshop. They could be, they could do a review of the regulations, and part of that workshop could be a, you know, a discussion or presentation from them of their feedback to the Board of Commissioners, to the planning board jointly. So we're just looking at some further direction from the board in terms of what you would like us to begin preparing to do. And it may be early because obviously a consultant would require funding to do that.
And what kind of peer reviewers? Are we talking about somebody with an engineering background?
Yes. I did something similar to this in a previous community, and we had hired VHB, and they basically solicited input. They surveyed all of the stakeholders, the staff and boards about stormwater and the regulation of stormwater more holistically, less related, not related solely to residential. And they aggregated all of those responses, did an analysis of our regulations, came and did a presentation, and it was a facilitated workshop where they had the stakeholders and the board members kind of discuss their thoughts and at least actions to maybe make the regulations more consistent and policies more consistent with the consensus of the board members. It was a completely different dynamic than what we're dealing with here, but it was a similar process. And I believe we were looking at $7,000 to $10,000 for that work.
With regard to the timeline, if we were to do that kind of process, we would want the opportunity for us and users of the regulations and the planning board to throw any concerns that we've had or heard into the hopper so that that consultant would be aware of all of those. So that would suggest to me that first you'd have to find a consultant and bring them to the board. The board would have to okay that. Then you would go through that process of, you know, one to two months of that review, and then it's not until then that you're really ready for a workshop.
If the board wants, we could solicit proposals and quotes and come back at a future date for something like that.
I'll ask the board what their thoughts are. I'd like for us to, you know, sort of get through the stormwater process. It's been sort of a, not a cloud, but it's been an issue that we've needed to resolve for a while, and it's been muddied with the fill regulations and that sort of thing. And we, you know, we've made some progress, but, you know, and there are folks out there using the regulations who have expressed concerns, and, you know, the board may have some of its own concerns to share. So I'll ask the board what your thoughts are about that process and a potential third-party reviewer. Webb?
I would like to hear specifically what the options are. What are you asking of me?
I guess the specific request now would be to ask whether staff should investigate and bring to us a third-party reviewer to lead a discussion about the stormwater regulations.
And I believe, based on January's retreat, I think the board wanted some assessment of the efficacy of the regulations. You know, were they suitable for the town? Were they suitable in terms of meeting the goals of the town, the goals of the board? And I think, so that technical assessment with some part of a facilitated workshop, I think, is what we were thinking.
My recollection of the question, I think I was one of the ones perhaps who posed it, is we've been through multiple iterations of the stormwater regulations, and we've done that on our own with, for the most part, with staff, with the town engineer. And my thought at that time was that it would be beneficial to know what's the real science of what we want to do, not just modifying regulations that we have, but what do we really need in terms of drainage from lots, if anything? I mean, you know, we've gone to a, you know, a fairly sophisticated plan that requires engineering and requires, or at least requires some level of design on individual lots, and we've had some say, well, when the subdivision was designed and the swales were put in, that was designed for the lot coverage that's there, so why do we have any, any regulation? And I would like for somebody to tell us what's the, what's the real answer. Do we have situations where we need additional drainage on lots or not? And if we don't, what is it we need to do to restore infrastructure? That's my question, anyway.
I'll try to answer your question. I think it goes back more even to a philosophical value, and I think, well, I'll say it this way. The town used to have a philosophical value on stormwater and drainage, and it was to retain and perk, and the ordinances that followed were based on those principles. At some point in time over the last 15 years, that philosophical value, either by design or by happenstance, has changed basically to convey and remove. So you have two different ways to attack this based on your philosophical value. I personally would like to go back to a retain and perk value. Whatever we do, I want to keep it very simple and very easy for property owners particularly to implement at zero to a reasonable cost. What it seems like we've done is developed a lot of rules that have gone away from a prescriptive measure in residential areas to a hybrid descriptive measure or a highly engineered process, which I prefer not to have to do. I understand when we develop commercially a descriptive measure with highly engineered works because it's usually a bigger project, and I understand that. So I guess to answer your question, do we need somebody to facilitate it? To me, it depends on what are we trying to do? I mean, I think we've got to, we've got to, as a board, figure out what's our philosophical value of how we want to approach it, and then what are the best alternatives to do that? I kind of feel like we migrated without really focusing on a big picture.
Right. Well, that discussion might be appropriate to the retreat in September. And based on the timing I'm hearing, we're not going to make a decision on, you know, we're not going to see any information about a potential facilitator or anything before that, anyway. So it seems to me perhaps that we have this discussion that you're describing at the retreat and that we come back to the next board meeting and make a determination about what kind of help we need, if any, for stormwater discussion.
And I have a question. Are we talking about two different RFQs or are we talking about one for a facilitator and one for an engineer to do it? Or you talk about the same group to do it all?
The same group to do it all.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
I think the retreat's probably, I think the retreat's probably germane to this.
Okay. All right. So we're going to, we're going to put that decision for right now.
All right. And the last item that I wanted the feedback from the board on was the RFQ for the update of the decentralized wastewater management plan. Hoping that will be released towards the end of next week but before the month regardless. And wanted to know if the board wanted to, because of the importance of this project, did the board want to be involved in the evaluation and selection of the consultant for that project? Normally with these, it would be an evaluation done by town staff and the staff, and ultimately selected by the town manager. But didn't want to miss the opportunity for the board to be involved in that evaluation. Just thinking about it, we could, once we received all of the responses, we could distribute those to the board. The board could do a preliminary evaluation, decide whether or not they needed to schedule any interviews, shortlist any of those, and we could do it over two meetings, I anticipate, to reach a decision.
Or do you wish to have input on the, on that selection?
I'm not, I'm not inclined to put my hand in a consultant's election.
I think staff and a manager should be able to do this.
Yes, so.
Good.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Well, Michael, one last thing before you leave the podium. In your, in your report, would you please describe to the board the conversation we had with the census?
Sure.
Agency and what the plan was, which may now have been abandoned.
So the mayor and I had a call with Derek DeRazio, partner specialist for North Carolina with the U.S. Census Bureau, and he told us the things we were already aware of in terms of the low response rate for Dare County, but also the fact that a lot of that is attributed to the Census Bureau not recognizing vacant homes. And we estimate, at least what I indicate here, as of June 23rd, excuse me, as of July 20th, we have a functional response rate of 85.46 percent, and that's based on what we understand our occupied, permanently occupied versus seasonal housing to be. So I think that's, that's positive that we believe that, but we still know that there's at least 15 percent, and Roberta and I were talking about this yesterday, it could be as high as maybe 25 percent of households that maybe have not responded yet. And so the census, because of the coronavirus, the Census Bureau had requested to extend the completion of the census from the end of September to the end of October, and we are learning this week that that request either has been or would not be approved. So the census now will be ending at the end of September. People will not have as long, that additional time to respond if they haven't. The enumerators that go out in the community will not have as much time to respond. Mr. DeRazio discussed the conditions, the status with us before we knew that that was going to happen. And so there were some things that we, he asked us to consider doing messaging in our utility bills, which we hope to get out, I believe, in the August and September mailings that prompt people to either phone or go to the website to complete the census. We acquired from Dare County a banner that we've been using as of last week at the farmer's market, and we'll have up at least through the end of the farmer's market season. I sent an email to town staff. I got one response to that telling me they had already completed it, so that was good. And we talked to Roberta about additional messaging that we are going to do. And yeah, so I think it's, and they are not, the message I received yesterday, they're not going to not have the enumerators going around for in-person, you know, census responses, but it'll probably be more a shortened effort. And what I did give him to help, maybe, we took the Dare County assessor's data and basically culled out anyone that doesn't have a local mailing address and gave him those addresses, that hopefully that helps him zero down, because they know the properties that they don't have responses from. So if they can hopefully compare those two, they can hopefully go to the properties and focus on the ones that have not had responses submitted, so.
We were trying to make sure to them that they didn't start on the oceanfront, that they started in occupied neighborhoods.
Right.
Residential neighborhoods.
Thank you, because they've just gone to addresses, as I've observed, that are never going to be responsive because they're not residents.
Yeah, unfortunately, that's their practice, so.
Yeah. And so it was unfortunate. It's remarkable, but it should not have been remarkable that that wasn't already part of their thinking. Thank you.
And enumerators are just tunnel visioned.
Correct. Right. So Michael did provide them that information to try to direct them where they could be the most efficient once they started. So if we do get them on the ground and they do follow that guidance, at least they will make some headway.
Good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Michael.
All right. Thank you.
Michael, one question.
Yes.
Michael, in your Kama land use plan update?
Yes.
How long did it take to get a response from Kama once we submitted our plan with their remarks and concerns?
You know, I'd have to go back and check the exact dates. I feel like it was approximately two months.
How long?
Two months, I believe.
I was hoping that.
It could have been longer than that.
I was going to say, I thought we submitted our plan a really long time ago.
I'd have to check the exact date on when we submitted. I can do that. I'm happy to do that.
Please.
I will. We should have, and I talked with Holly this morning, of course, I was out of the office last week, and she and I had met the week prior and went over the responses or the comments we've received, and I know she's waiting on a couple of points, data points, but we should have a response submitted back by the end of this week.
Okay, because I know this board's approved that plan a long time ago, years ago.
2017, I believe.
Yeah, and my concern is this is 2020. Was the delay on us or was the delay on the response from Kama?
We, you know, we did not start the submittal process until last year, until March, April of last year.
So we kept it for two years before we, that's an inordinate amount of time for us to keep a document that is so important from being submitted. I mean, what did we do for two years?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't have the background on that.
He wasn't here.
Yeah.
That just sounds like somebody internally, we've dropped the ball to keep it for two years. I was concerned that Kama had dropped the ball, and I'm less concerned about Kama dropping the ball than we are.
If you would verify that timeline.
Sure. I can do that. I can do that.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Michael. Let's take a 10-minute recess. Okay, the board has returned to session. The next item on our agenda is item H. Old business tabled from previous meetings. We have two items. H1, discussion of the Doughty Park part-time position. And, Michael, one question I do have as we launch into that is timing. The farmer's market extends into September? No?
So that's why I went back. I wanted to grab my phone, so I had my calendar. The last date, because we were holding them July and August, the last date would be August Ideally, we would want at least a week or two at the end of that to do any close-out work with any of the vendors and things like that. And of course, prep for the 2021 season would start February or March.
Okay. So we can, we can have a separate discussion about that, but I guess the question is really, what are we going to do for the month of August? Because we've extended this kind of incrementally as we've gone along through the summer. So I'll ask the board what your thoughts are.
Since I was one of the ones about concerns about it, I'm not opposed to doing it, but I'd like to see staff develop a plan as we move forward because we're paying somebody to do a part-time position, but it seems to be consuming an awful lot of planning department staff time. And as we go forward, I don't see how we can do that when we have you, Kelly, different, I know this has been a different year, but I know- I know this has been a different year, but I know that we need to have a plan better developed.
Sure, if you'd like, I can kind of describe how the staffing has functioned, at least at the four markets we've had so far this year.
And I've heard the reports, I'm not worried about that. What I'm asking for is, as we move forward, if the board concurs, to have a better plan of how we're going to run the Doughty Park, how we're going to staff Doughty Park, and what are you assigning to Doughty Park.
And, and I know that, you know, this probably to some degree rolls into the manager's discussion about structure and staffing.
It does, and I mentioned it with my, when I talked to Greg the other day.
And that kind of thing, so I think it can also take place as part of that discussion as well. I guess, as we, after we close out this year, I guess we can look forward to a normal season in 2021. That remains to be seen, frankly.
It does.
But there also, I guess, needs to be some discussion about what kind of year we anticipate projecting in 2021.
I mean, if we're here in eighteen months, you're looking at 2021.
Yeah, yeah, so. Any other input from commissioners? I believe we need to probably do this in the form of a motion. I think we've been doing that kind of incrementally, and that would be to extend, I would suggest we extend the part-time manager position to, through the last farmers, last scheduled farmer's market plus two weeks for closeout. I'll make that as a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The next item is consideration of a charge and appointments to the reuse recycle task force. Andy?
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. So several months ago, the board asked that we consider developing a task force to look at waste reduction efforts for the town. And so we're at the beginning of assembling that task force, the main charge of the task force to really look at waste reduction efforts for the town. Obviously sanitation is a big component of our public works department, is a pretty expensive item in our budget, not only for the collection of materials, but for the tipping fees we pay. And so we do a number of things, other than just collecting material and putting it in the landfill. We have a recycling program, drop-off centers, we have bulk waste, we have debris pickup, and all these different efforts contribute to reducing the amount of material that goes to landfill, and therefore reducing the amount of tipping fees we pay. But this is a chance to look at this more comprehensively, see how we can improve those services, and with the help of our community, figure out ways to reduce the amount of material that is thrown away, and therefore reducing the cost to the town at the same time. So essentially, this committee, the task force, would look at waste reduction efforts and how we can pull material out of the waste stream, and for the material that is collected, figuring out ways to ensure that it's not disposed of permanently, but it has some sort of beneficial reuse. Obviously, you know, for years, people have talked about the three Rs, reduce, reuse, recycle. You know, there's a reason why recycling is the third R, because, you know, managing your own consumption is the primary thing that you can do to reduce waste. And then from there, reused material is much better than having to actually process and recycle material. A lot of communities are looking at this now, they've expanded the three Rs to five Rs, and some communities are looking at refuse, like I'm not going to buy these types of products because of the way they're packaged, and there's an education component there, so that's, that's one thing that this committee could do, is really try to educate the public on, you know, what is beneficial in terms of consumption. And then rot was one I saw, where they're really looking at composting efforts and trying to prevent food waste from getting into the waste stream, because that's really heavy, for one. And there's a beneficial reuse at the source, most of the time, for individual property owners, to compost material at their properties and use it for gardening and other things. So, sort of see this committee, this task force, again, as a waste reduction task force, figure out ways we can improve our services at the same time. On page two of the staff report, we listed several different charges for this committee, or tasks for the committee, and it covers a wide range of things. And I, you know, I think we have enough information to get started, would certainly like to hear if there's anything in this list of things that the board really wants us to dig into, or prioritize greater than other things. Beyond that, you've been given a list of thirteen individuals who've expressed interest in being part of the task force. We'd welcome selection of those members, so we can get started, looking at trying to meet at least monthly, and through the, through the end of the calendar year, and trying to get something together to bring back to the board for next year's budget. So that's what we have for you today, and I guess it's at the board's pleasure at this point to select the committee or the task force.
I'll just say, I appreciate the charge and the time that appeared to go into that. Always, we've talked about recycling and sort of a technical aspect, okay, what does it cost? Are we going to do it curbside? What's the schedule? And that's sort of the, been really the extent of how we've talked about recycling. We got one of our food magazines, and my wife pointed out an ad from Starbucks for a new product that they have, which is an individual tin of coffee. You open it and dump it in the filter to make one pot, and then throw that away. Instead of scooping it out of a bag or a gallon tub, you get to dump it in a filter and get rid of that little container. And my immediate response to seeing that was, we'll never get ahead of this waste issue as long as companies keep offering us stuff like that and we keep buying it. And so, I hope, ultimately, I really hope that there's ultimately a big educational, try to change some culture component and get some refusal in people's minds, so. Any comments on the charge, before we go to assigning the committee?
I'm appreciative of the charge. There are a couple of points that I really liked, where it talked about bringing in local and regional partners to, you know, figure it out better, and I think that's really important. Since we are somewhat isolated out here, we need a local and regional partnership to make it work. It doesn't need to be just the town in Agshead, it needs to be somehow a bigger group, because that's the only way we're going to find a market, or have more ideas of what to do.
Right.
It's interesting, you mentioned that, having some recent discussions, and you remember back in the spring, when we were trying to work out an agreement to take the material that was being incinerated to a facility in Portsmouth, then have it recycled. Further conversations about that reveal that, you know, they were just trying to ramp up their business, and so they really wanted a long-term commitment from the town, because they had to invest in equipment, and so they needed something from other towns, too, in order to make the whole thing work. And so that's what we're dealing with, is just capacity issues.
Yeah, yep.
Well, I would just say, often say, you know, sooner or later, one good public policy comes in direct conflict with another, and I've got two public policy issues. One is recycling, et cetera, or good public policy, but also fiscal is a very important policy, and I think we need to add in this charge to also look at the fiscal, fiscal component, F-I-C-A-L, as part of this process, not just focus on
Right.
how to do it. Anybody can come up with a plan, but coming up with a plan and starting to put money costs to it might be a different plan.
Right.
And I'd like to see that as an important aspect of this, this process.
Okay, all right, thank you. Yep.
I agree with Webb, I think the committee should have a full and clear understanding of the costs that we have, that the town has, and I'm talking about what we have invested as far as the cans go, and how much, because I think a lot of the citizens still don't know the true cost of recycling, and I just hope that information is completely out and transparent, and they have all the information that's needed. And then I agree with Commissioner Cahoon in that partnerships in this will, due to our, where we're located, we've got to have state assistance.
You know, I anticipate one of the first meetings we have with the task force would just to kind of lay out the entire sanitation picture for the town, like what does the sanitation department cost us, what are our tipping fees, how much is diverted, how much goes to C and D, how much goes to bulk waste, and sort of explain the costs of all of that, and give them a better understanding of what we're doing as a town. And they, and they really can't move forward on their charge until they really understand that first.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
If there's no other discussion of the charge, we do have a number of applicants. I have talked with board members about an appropriate size for this group, and it sounds generally like smaller, rather than, rather than larger, and my experience is that, you know, right-sized committees get a lot further than simply putting a lot of, you know, more folks in a room. And in order to expedite this, rather than sort of go through the thirteen, I propose that, to offer a slate, an initial slate, and then we can, can add or subtract if you wish. And that initial slate would be Meredith Fish, Robert Netch, David Bragg, Ann Daisy, and Carrie Backus.
Would you repeat those, please?
I will. That would be Meredith Fish, Robert Netch, David Bragg, Ann Daisy, and Carrie Backus.
Just a point, I was hoping to make a nomination of a list, and that was my list.
Okay. All right.
That's why, that's why I was surprised.
Okay, all right, well, good. Board?
And, excuse me, and that's subject to every one of these people being a resident of Agshead.
Oh, yes.
Because they're, I want to make sure that the people we put on the committee are residents. I don't care if they're property owners, or renters, or anything, but I do want to make sure, I don't care if they vote, I don't care about anything except that they be a resident.
Yes, I appreciate that.
I would agree with that.
Sure, absolutely. So do board members wish to make any additions or subtractions to that list?
As long as we have Mr. Bragg on it, I'm good with it.
That was my list, minus one person, but I can, I can go with that.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't submit a list until I checked off some stuff, but, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay, all right, very good. Then, that being the list, I'll make that in the form of a motion, then, that the committee consists of, subject to verification that they are residents, Meredith Fish, Robert Netch, David Bragg, Ann Daisy, and Carrie Backus.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I wasn't aye, I'm sorry, I kind of gagged on my, gagged on my aye there. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is new business, and that would be committee reports, and I'll ask board members, I can't remember where I started.
Nothing from Stormwater.
Okay. Renee? Webb?
None.
Okay, great, thank you. The next item on our agenda would be consideration of the Human Resources Manager job description. Greg?
Thank you, Mayor Commission. With the vacancy in the Human Resources Director position, gave staff the opportunity to review the job description prior to looking at how we wanted to refill that position. We've made some recommended changes, changing the position from a director to a manager, changing it from a position that was a direct report to the town manager, and placed it functionally within the Finance Administrative Services Division, under the direction of the finance officer. And also lowered the position one grade from a sixteen to a fifteen. That impacts salary about thirty-five hundred dollars on the low end, and I think forty-five hundred to five thousand or so on the, on the top end of the position. We'd run some of those concepts by the board before we went out on the interview, or I should say, not interview, but on the recruitment process. We have forty-five applicants, we have narrowed it down to a top five that we're now in the process of contacting and setting up interviews for. So, certainly the process is moving forward, but at this point, asking for board approval of the job description for Human Resources Manager.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. Any questions for Greg?
No, I like the changes that have been made.
Very good. Questions?
Just make a motion to accept the change in the position as presented.
Second. I have a motion and a second, then. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Great, thank you very much for that.
Mayor, may I make a suggestion, that we move to a presentation from town manager and put the town attorneys a little further, just due to the context of the county attorneys?
That, that would be very appropriate, absolutely, we can do that. So we will jump over item J and go to item K, items and presentations from the town manager. We do not have number one, that will, that presentation will be postponed, so we will go to item K2, which is an update on the 158 multi-use path. Good morning, David.
Good morning, Mayor, Board of Commissioners. I'm here to go ahead and give the board an update to the construction progress of the West Side multi-use path. I'm going to, if you can go ahead, okay. This, this past year, the town embarked upon adding approximately two and a half miles of multi-use path to the west side of South Croweington Highway. Started in the very north end with Phase 8A, which spans from Soundside Road all the way down to West Danube Street, then Phase 8C, which goes from West Danube down to West Sea Chase, and then Phase 8B, which spans from West Bay Meadow down to Gull Street. Phase 8A was completed back in April of this year. Phase 8C, which is the span, and I'll go ahead and bring this up here on the screen. So Phase 8A spans from Soundside Road down to West Danube. Phase 8C spans from West Danube down to West Sea Chase, and then Phase 8B, which spans from West Bay Meadow down to Gull Street. So Phase 8A is complete. Phase 8C is about ninety-nine percent complete. There's some incidental work that is remaining to go ahead and close that out, and currently we are working on Phase 8B. To date, the pathway has been completed from West Bay Meadow down to the north side of the Outer Banks Event Site, and then now the crews are working south of the Outer Banks Event Site and have completed the pathway down to the Agshead Raceway, which is right here, tied into the north side on that driveway. And what remains is about eight hundred and fifty feet, going from Agshead Raceway down to the main entrance at the outlet to Agshead. So we're about sixty-five to seventy-five, sixty-five to seventy percent complete for that phase. Town staff has been working with the business owners within this corridor to go ahead and address their concerns, as well as give them periodic updates as to when they can expect construction activity out in front of their businesses, as well as, excuse me, posting of additional signage to alert vehicular traffic as to the presence of those entrances during the course of construction. during the course of construction. An update was provided last month to the board by RPC Contracting and their representative, Eddie Valavieso, and he had indicated a lag in the construction schedule. Right now, as it stands, Phase Eight B and the timeframe that was given, which was substantial completion of August twentieth and final completion of August twenty-seventh for Phase Eight B, we're currently tracking on that, weather permitting. And so we hope, when we report out to you next month, that we will be well, far along in the progress of construction in completing the Phase Eight B portion of the West Side multi-use path. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
So we should be substantially complete with that part by the time we get to our next meeting, weather permitting.
Yes, sir.
That stretch that remains, how close is that to being ready for concrete, which would sort of be the last lane-blocking sort of requirement?
The sequence right now, especially within this concentration of businesses, is to put in the flatwork, put in the curb and gutter, and those ramp transitions, try to get this area complete first before progressing southward. So they're on the back half of going ahead and completing all those construction items. And once that is complete, then they will progress southward with the pathway work, and then come back and follow that same sequence with the addition of the curb and gutter, and then the ramp transitions, and then they will finish north of the Outer Banks Event Site by doing the same thing with the ramp transitions and curb and gutter installation.
All right. Was the big pile of dirt part of our project at the event site? Or was that something else?
I think that was a combination of import fill material and then some of the cut material from the project, so I think it's a balance of both.
Thank you. Webb?
Substantially complete is not a casual term, and you mentioned ninety-nine percent complete on one section. Does that meet the criteria of being substantially complete?
Yes, they have met substantial completion. Substantial completion for this scope of work includes the curb and gutter patchwork as well as the flatwork, which is the actual path itself. So that's what we have defined as substantial completion. For Phase Eight C, they're about ninety-nine percent complete, so they haven't yet met final completion, so there's just some...
The important, excuse me for interrupt, but the point is, when they are substantially complete, that's when the clock stops, as far as liquidated damages or anything like that?
For liquidated damages, there are two different assessments. For substantial completion, we have five hundred dollars a day that we assess. And then for final completion, it's reduced to two hundred and fifty dollars per day. And so it's not cumulative, but they are separate and apart as far as the application of the assessment of those liquidated damages. So the clock was still running whenever they met substantial completion because they had exceeded their final completion date as well. And so both of those were enumerated within the contract documents.
And y'all had discussions, and everybody's on the same page as far as when substantial completion was done, and that when final completion generally will be, and what the fiscal implications of all that.
Yes, and what we do is, we'll go ahead and issue a certificate of substantial completion when that is met, and then we will go ahead and provide written documentation whenever final completion is met. So, yes, and we've been coordinating that throughout.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Kevin?
I just appreciate the meeting that y'all had with the business community down there, and the signage that you talked about earlier. I've seen that, and I think that's, is providing them some assistance as well, so thank you.
You're welcome. Renee?
Yeah, good job with the signage.
Yep. Thank you. Appreciate that. Look forward to having this completed and behind us. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is item K three, a discussion of the organizational assessment and recommendations.
Again, thank you, Mayor Commission. This is really, as I think, as I discuss, a kind of an initial organizational assessment. I think I've been on the job now about, almost seven weeks, and really wanted to key on some of the things that the board had brought up when I was hired, as well as some of the subsequent conversations with board members. And so really, really kind of start off with just looking at some organizational structure issues, as well as some of the positions that, such as previously discussed, HR Director, that was just a one-person position that reported to the Town Manager, and whether there was something that made a little, might work better from an organizational standpoint. And so we'd move that into Administrative Services. So there's some other recommendations in here as well. We included the organizational charts in the sense as they stand today, this Appendix A and on down until you get to the final appendix, which shows a proposed overall organizational chart. And in many cases, I think from a department standpoint, was a little bit of rethinking just where some of their, how they were set up structurally. Even though there, these organizational charts have been in the budget document or on our online, really gone in, departments have done some refining of showing who reports to who within their departments. The, so really kind of took a look at those issues and met with all the department directors as we discussed those structure issues, as well as then kind of the roles, in many cases, of deputy directors within those departments, and I think there's still some refinement to be done there. I think the other area that's still a bit of a, probably a question mark from the structure is Public Works, with the Public Works Director retiring at the end of September. We're already in the process, we've advertised the position, we have applications coming in, that position will be closing before long. So I think there'll be some decisions in Public Works that will certainly wait until the new Public Works Director's hired and some recommendations brought forth to the board at that point. But as I really kind of worked through this report, I really came up with a few conclusions and recommendations, and I'll just kind of reiterate those. One conclusion, departmental organization structures need to be evaluated for optimal reporting, accountability, and efficiency. Number two, the group of other positions should be evaluated in terms of reporting requirements to the Town Manager and Deputy Town Manager, so this included positions such as the Town Engineer, Administrative Assistant, PIO, and the HR, now manager, position. All departments, except Public Works, have a deputy director that are responsible for managing a significant number of staff. That certainly has been a concern that Public Works has brought forward. I'm not, I'm certainly not recommending at this point, though, of anything, of hiring a deputy Public Works Director. I think, again, that'll be something that, once the deputy, or once the new Public Works Director comes on board, we can look more at how things are structured and moving forward. But certainly no recommendation from me at this point regarding a deputy director there. The current personnel policy indicates that changes to job descriptions and the position classification plan require commission approval. As a result, minor changes to job descriptions, the pay plan, probably in some cases either delayed till they can maybe be packaged together, or they're just haven't been accomplished in the past. So I do have a recommendation on how to improve that. But I do note that Public Works, oh, I'm sorry, go back to number five, felt that communication can be enhanced between staff and the commission through strategic vision, visioning and regular written and oral communication from the management team, and ongoing agenda review meetings between the Town Manager and Commission. So we certainly have started those the last couple of months. We have the strategic visioning coming up in September that's going to be a little larger group than I think than what we've done in the past. And again, looking to see what we can continue to do to improve communication up and down between the commission, management staff, and employees. Public Works has an immediate need for additional supervisory staffing due to previously approved combination of facilities and sanitation superintendent positions and the not filling the vacated sanitation supervisor position. So then out of those conclusions came the following ten recommendations. Number one was to refine the organizational oversight responsibilities between the Town Manager and Deputy Town Manager, with the Deputy Town Manager to be responsible for management oversight of Public Works, planning, development, and information technology. Town Manager will directly oversee the Deputy Town Manager, police, fire, rescue, administrative services, and town clerk. Number two, capital project planning and engineering functions should be coordinated to a higher degree with Public Works. Deputy Town Manager and Town Engineer should establish weekly meetings with Public Works Director and superintendents to address capital project planning and ongoing maintenance of public facilities. Town Engineer would continue to be responsible for specific project engineering, as well as managing outside engineering contracts. Then three, the Administrative Assistant, PIO, to be placed under the supervision of the Town Clerk. Number four, the Human Resources position, which has already been accomplished with the previous board action. Five was to amend the Public Works organization chart to reflect the inclusion of Water Division. I think this is something that we discussed a little bit during the agenda review with members that, that had, water was not shown because of being an enterprise fund, but we've shown that it being included in Public Works organizational chart. Public Works should reinstitute the vacated sanitation supervisor position. That's a recommendation, we're not asking for that recommendation today, in the sense these are, I probably even characterize these as preliminary recommendations that will come back and ask for specific commission approval. Some of these in September, some may be a little later, particularly like this one, to have the new Public Works Director also weigh in on the evaluation. Amend the personnel policy to allow the Town Manager to approve changes to job descriptions and pay classification. If the changes are cost-neutral or result in a decrease, and any changes that result in an increase to compensation or to a higher grade would continue to require commission approval. I think the additional caveat, again, based on the agenda review, is just to have a process where any of those changes, at the time the Town Manager does them, they're reported back to the commission, so there isn't any other, you know, type of surprise six months down the road that some positions were changed. So probably, I'll look to bring forward that amendment to the personnel policy at the September meeting, if there's consensus that you're interested in these recommendations. The strategic visioning session for the fall of 2020, September, that's later on in the agenda, to include the active participation of all department directors with the Board of Commissioners. And nine, departmental staffing use and responsibilities of deputy director positions and general staffing issues should be reviewed for potential changes prior to the next fiscal year budget process. And then ten was to approve that revised organization chart in Appendix G, and I think that could even be done today if the commission so desires. With that, I will take any questions you might have.
Well, before we get to questions, I just want to thank you. It's always beneficial to have a fresh set of eyes look at your structure, and appreciate you diving into that as promptly as you did. So I can't remember which end I need to start on. I'll go with Michael down here.
No, I appreciate your work that we put into this, and I like the changes.
Okay. Renee?
I'm good, thank you. It's nice to see some changes coming forward.
Kevin?
Thank you. I like the changes.
Webb?
Well, I appreciate it as well, but I do have three things. Of course. One, and I appreciate your recommendations, but one thing I'd like to further look at is to change the title of the Finance Director to the Director of Administrative Services/Finance Director. And that's because we're putting the Human Resources person in that area, and I think that better reflects the true nature of what that position is now, if we do that. That's the first thing. Number two is, and we discussed this, but in Appendix B, under Fire Captains, we have a line where lieutenants, the firefighter EMTs, the engineer, and volunteers are all on the same line. And my question is, should the lieutenant be between the fire captain and the others?
Right. And I still need to follow up with the fire chief on that.
Okay, that's one. And then the last thing I have is, and we keep talking about public facilities, and I'm not talking about public facilities, I want to say public properties. And I actually feel like that we've got a lot of people that are responsible for certain things in public properties, and I'll just give an example, Doughty's Park. Who's responsible for Doughty's Park? And the question is, well, Public Works cuts the grass. Somebody in administration does the scheduling of it. Somebody else is in charge of insurance. And we got, it goes across a number of different departments, and what I'd just like to suggest is that, if too many people are in charge, nobody's in charge. And what I'd just like to suggest is that, as one of the deputy managers' job descriptions is that they are in charge of all public properties. It may not change a lot of procedural elements, but at least we've got somebody that we can go to and identify if something goes wrong. That person is the one that's coordinating all this, and those are my comments.
Very good. Thank you. I think what you hear generally, Greg, is consensus with some input to proceed with the administrative changes. I mean, that's within your purview, other than approving job descriptions, which we've done today, so.
Right, and I will then bring forward that change in the personnel policy, then, to reflect that as well, then.
Very good. Thank you.
Maybe while I'm up here, if I could just do, give you a quick status report on a few other items?
Absolutely.
For the upcoming September meeting, Chief Wells will be here to present the Fire Department strategic plan. That's something they've been working on in the past, particularly with the department this last week, and be working to refine that, bring it forward to the board. Also, Chief Webster will be on the agenda for September, really give an update on police activities and, you know, crime statistics, that type of reporting. So that'll be on your September meeting. Soundside Road, number of parking issues, I'm not sure how many board members have been contacted by residents in the area. We have had a meeting out there, staff, the Police Department, Deputy Town Manager, meeting with neighbors, working on some potential solutions. It's been a problem that sounds like it's been growing over time of a lot of people getting back in there and parking in that neighborhood. Some of the solutions certainly involve working with the Park Service, maybe a potential for a shuttle or some other means of trying to cut down the amount of people who come back in there to park. Beach nourishment, we've started a quarterly meeting with the county and the other beach communities, as well as our consultants. We had a first meeting a couple of weeks ago, really looking to see how, from the beach community standpoint, we can collaborate on beach nourishment. We think there's some potential for cost savings down the road, depending upon kind of timing of projects. Certainly where we're at, we're waiting on our FEMA obligation of funds for the first of 2021, so things, it looks like our maintenance project doesn't necessarily line up with some of the other communities on some project they may have moving forward, but we're going to continue to work with them and, from a coordination standpoint. And then also may just find, just kind of a great job to all departments in preparation for the hurricane tropical storm. I think we... I think we had probably the right amount of prep going into what the event was. We had, I think, certainly both from fires department, police department, Public Works, pretty well prepared going in and ended up pretty minor issues throughout the community based on the severity of the event.
Good.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much. We shuffled the agenda. I'll ask the mayor pro tem, should we proceed with the commissioner's agenda and mayor's agenda before we jump back to the attorney agenda? Was that your intent? Okay. All right, very good. All right, well, let's go with the Board of Commissioners' agenda, and I'll go the other way. Webb?
I only have one thing, and I'd ask the manager and the police chief to explain to me the procedural process that the police department is using to monitor our public beach access parking and the process of patrol on the beach road. There've been numerous incidents that I've recognized, and to me, it would be easily corrected if the patrol was happening like I thought it should. So I don't understand how the patrol is being implemented.
Yes, sir. Thank you for posing this question and for asking for this information. As y'all know, Patrol Division works 12-hour shifts, 24 hours a day, and the officers have a host of issues they deal with during the course of the day, from traffic enforcement, addressing calls for service, extra patrols, report writing, rest processes, and that's just a few of them. During our undedicated time, that is, that time where you're not actually busy with other activities, officers patrol. And it's during this time that they address these issues, such as identifying hazards, violations of law, parking issues, making community contacts, those sorts of things. In general, officers have been offered a wide range of discretion in these activities, and in addressing certain activities like parking. I know when I came on board, you know, and I was sort of given a historical record of how things had come with especially parking issues, there was a fair amount of discretion that was given to officers in addressing these, such as reaching out to people, educating them, asking them to move their vehicles. As a result, there have not been a lot of parking tickets issued on multi-use path or any accesses. And I know officers traditionally try to work with people on these parking issues. So there's no specific set schedule for going to these individual areas and addressing parking issues. As a general rule, when you come on duty in the morning or the evening, you check your area, you scan your area for hazards, for violations of the law, and you try to get those addressed. And then towards the end of your shift, before you go home, you try to do the same thing before the next squad comes on board so you can kind of clean up any loose ends you might have hanging out there. But ticketing itself, generally, tickets issued to the owner of the motor vehicle, they're given 48 hours to appeal to the traffic bureau. They're given, I believe it's 15 days to pay the citation. Officers have used tickets or warning tickets to address these issues. So that's in a nutshell what the department's doing now. So certainly any direction that, like I said, when I came on board, I was sort of given the overview of how we've been handling issues in the past. I know there was a period of time where we sort of had a zero tolerance to parking, kind of counsel against that. Zero tolerance gets you, really doesn't get you a whole lot, but some ill will. That's why I firmly believe we need to stick with officer discretion on these issues.
I'll just further that by saying, I think the board, and the board's going to correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the board has put the multi-use path up in your first category, not in your second category, as far as what's important to the board. We, I don't think we've changed from saying that the multi-use path was considered one of the primary functions of the police department and not included in those other things after they finish their priority schedule. I think we dictated that that was in the front schedule, and I just don't see it happening.
Yes, sir. You're right. And that was, and told to me when I first became the police chief, that the multi-use path was a priority throughout the town. That message is constantly conveyed to officers to keep that multi-use path open. I know there was a great deal of latitude given to officers as far as if a car is not completely blocking the multi-use path, or if it's a vendor, or, you know, some of those nuanced types of things to try to make sure at least that that path is kept open, that it's not creating a hazard where people are not walking into the street. So that's kind of the operational philosophy we've been going with for some time now.
Is it blocked? I'll ask, since you raised the issue, Webb, is, with regard to the multi-use path, is the issue whether the path is being blocked for periods of time, or is it other issues that are occurring on the multi-use path?
And I just don't want to be the only one answering, but I will tell you, from my perspective, it's a lot better this summer than last summer because there were a lot of construction going on last summer, and a lot of construction vehicles were encumbering the entire path for a long period of time, and nothing was being done. Those projects are complete, except for one, the person that's doing it is basically in compliance. A lot of vendors, however, are parking for an hour or so in the process, but if you want to go further, there are motorized vehicles that are constantly zooming up and down the path, and no motorized vehicles are allowed on the path.
Yeah. Go ahead, Renee.
Follow up. Somebody, I don't know whether they're a property owner, but somebody has a black golf cart that zooms up and down the bike path constantly. It goes, comes from the north to the south, then when it gets to Whalebone, it goes in the street, then it goes around and goes back on the bike path, has no license, no seat belts, no turn signals, and it's a hazard because it takes up the entire bike path. And people, I think people have to move out of the way with children and strollers. It's not permitted, but it's happening a lot. And the one thing I have, I'll wait for my turn, but.
I've seen a number of electric bikes in particular that are running at high speeds that are pretty close to people, and NAGs, including me, are, everybody's walking around with AirPods. And so even when somebody on a bicycle comes up legally and says, "on your left," a lot of times you don't hear it. But it's one thing when somebody's coming by you at 22 miles an hour on an electric bike and, or, and then we've got a lot of electric scooters, you know, and then the golf carts. So we're getting more of that, but I think we're getting less of the construction traffic blocking the path.
But if I may, before I go to other commissioners, because this is a question that I have, I've made this observation on the multi-use path on 158, as well as the multi-use path along 12, and we do, our rule is no motorized vehicles on either of those paths. And we're seeing, you know, certainly the bicycles and those traveling at high speed. And I had wondered about asking the board, you know, are we going to be zero tolerance, like with the single-wheel skateboards, for example? You know, what is, do we want to become the skateboard, electric skateboard police or not? And do we, do we need to revisit the motorized vehicle to say, certain motorized vehicles and not other vehicles? Or, so that was going to be one of my questions for today, just more generally, so.
We can certainly educate people when we see them, you know, operating these motorized devices. I know sometimes I've not realized that they were motorized.
Yeah, the bicycles sometimes.
Sometimes it kind of sneak up on you. Because I know when I do my morning runs and stuff, I see them, and, you know, we try to address them when we can. And I think, you know, educational is where we should start, trying to really push out a message of educating people not to use those devices. But of course, you know, we're going to push them off the multi-use path, they're going to be somewhere else, and that's a concern.
Well, yeah, I mean, as a cyclist, I would argue if you push them off the multi-use path, they'll be on the shoulder where they ought to be. I mean, that's where, that's where, that's where I think cyclists should be anyway, frankly, unless, unless you're cycling with small children and really need to be on the multi-use path, and that's going to be at low speed. But otherwise, I mean, my personal argument would be get on the shoulder. So, Webb, anything else?
There's a difference in cycling and riding a bicycle.
Yeah, there is. There is.
And riding a bicycle with kids is not cycling.
Correct. That's right. Not, and getting to your job on an electric bicycle is a different exercise than riding with your children.
Riding your bike with your coffee in your back satchel to your job is not cycling either.
Thank you. Kevin?
Chief, just the officer discretion, I think you're good on that. I hope that they, you continue to allow that, but just reemphasizing to the officer, sometimes just a little reminding that, look, we need to really keep an eye on these beach accesses this time of the year, you know, with them filling up so early in the morning, especially on pretty days. And then the motorized vehicles, the motorized golf car, the golf carts on the multi-use path, some of them know, some of them don't know. So just, I would hope that we just keep an extra lookout. That's it.
Right. We've really pushed out the message too, as far as, because I know we had the issue in the Whalebone area with the golf cart. I wasn't aware of the specifics of that golf cart, but, so guys have been keeping a good watch down in that area in South Nags Head for these golf carts riding on the multi-use path. I've seen plenty on the street, and I'm always looking for tags, and I usually, usually, you know, 99.9% of the time, see a tag, which kind of, you know.
Yeah, I know.
Putting a tag on a golf cart, I'm still trying to figure that one out, but is what it is.
Right. Really, just, it's ultimately, your job is public safety, and so those folks who are operating electric bicycles at high speed, regardless of where they are, you know, they may be a safety issue, and they should certainly be educated in terms of their behavior in that regard. Seems like I had a, oh, and the other thing is, I wish I had helped out. I think, based on one of the calls that we had had, one of the coordination calls, I knew that the campgrounds on Okeechobee and Hatteras Island were all full. And when we called for that evacuation, I could have probably given you a heads up if I thought of that, that you need to watch out for campers because they're not going to go very far because they think they're going to get back down there in a couple of days. And I'm kind of surprised we didn't see even a bigger problem than we did. Renee?
Thank you. Chief, the one thing that's been a priority over the past few years is traffic in Whalebone.
Yes, ma'am.
And I have not seen that enforcement this year at all. I've not seen, you know, the presence of traffic control in Whalebone at all this year. We have an awful lot of walking communities going to the places at night. Granted, they're out a little earlier this year than later because a lot of places are closing earlier, but I think if we had a greater presence in Whalebone, some of these issues would not be coming to light today. Because I did see an awful lot of traffic enforcement over the past few years, but I've seen pretty much zero this year in Whalebone.
Yes, ma'am. I'll reinforce that.
I know that at one point, animal control was even, because that speed limit drops from Gaul Street around to the intersection from 35 to 25, and you can tell people are not having any traffic control because the people from other local communities are using it as a raceway at night now with their souped-up trucks. And that police have pretty well stopped it over the past couple of years.
Yes, ma'am.
And it's coming out. So that's my public safety comments for today.
I'm glad you told me that. I don't think I've ever noticed that the speed drops to 25.
At Wall Street, around through, until you get to the intersection of 12 and 158, it goes to 25 in both directions.
Okay. Well, I've either done it or not been caught yet.
Cyclists as well.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
But that was all I had on police. The other thing I'd like to do is thank public safety, I mean, excuse me, sanitation for their work yesterday. Either the renters that were here this week didn't pay attention that there was an impending storm for winds and did not secure any trash cans, or that the communication did not go out from either public, from the rental companies to secure their trash cans, because most people didn't even roll them in from pickup yesterday, I mean, on Monday. And they were all up and down the street, and our guys were out there rolling the carts back as people laughed at them from some of the houses. Thanks for rolling our carts back in instead of them going out and even securing them the night before. So I'd like to commend our trash division for all the work they did, since the renters were too lazy to even roll them back. And I know that probably won't go over real well, but there needs to be a little bit better communication, I think, both from a, from us giving out directives, roll the trash cans back in, in our PIOs, and to the rental companies saying, renters, please roll your trash cans in because they're going to end up hitting other cars, or they're going to roll down the street, you're not going to know what house they belong to. And we got really lucky. This was a minor little wind event, and it could have been a major wind event.
We did. While you're giving out kudos at Public Works, I'll add, I finally got my running groove back some this summer, and had been running on the beach early in the mornings, trying to beat the heat a little bit, which means starting is, you know, between 5:00 and 5:30 a lot of mornings. And the control of stuff out on the beach has been pretty good. I mean, I have passed along some observations about, seems to be a little bit of a problem area, just a little bit south of Nags Head Pier, for some reason. There's about 15 cottages in there that seem to consistently want to come out early. But somebody has gotten on that when it's happened, and I just want to say I appreciate staff passing that along, and I appreciate Public Works dealing with that, either by their education or however they're doing it, but they've done a good job of, they've done a good job of that.
I have one more.
Yes.
The other thing, Chief, as you talk about, and this one came to me as we were talking, is that vendors that are delivering, using a lane of traffic for 30 minutes to unload their deliveries is really not safety.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, I watched a Pepsi truck, and had tons of people going, "How can the town allow this?" I said, "Well, because there's no policeman right there." But I watched a Pepsi truck block a lane of traffic for 30 minutes while they unloaded in the lane of traffic to deliver instead of backing into the business. I mean, and the business wasn't even open, so they, that's just being lazy on the driver's part and being allowed to get away with it.
Yes, ma'am.
Pepsi is the, Pepsi was the violator, so that should not have happened. That was really a public safety hazard with, right there, as cars were coming out of a side street, people were trying to go around, and then all of a sudden, they were nose to nose. So.
Yes, ma'am.
My vendors, I go out there and make them move. I tell them, "Don't park there. I will call the police and give you a ticket."
Good.
Because you're not going to block the bike path, you're not going to block the lane of traffic. But I'm not a policeman for every other business.
Correct. Great. Good. Thank you. Mike?
Thank you, Mr. Webster. I'm not going to yell at you like the rest of us.
Thank you, Chief.
Deb, I appreciate y'all bringing these to my attention.
Thank you.
You know, we will address them. I would just ask all of y'all, please, you have my phone number, if y'all ever as an individual see, and it's the same thing we would ask anybody in the community, if you see a violation, please let us know. Call me, we'll get a, we'll get a unit down there. We don't always see everything. Sometimes you would think something's been there so long it should have been seen, but please, if you, if you have a concern, give me a call, and we'll get it addressed.
Thank you, sir.
The next item on our agenda is the mayor's agenda. I'm going to continue to leave this future town envisioning. We have a retreat coming up, so I think there'll be opportunities there. It's been a busy year between COVID and our staffing situation and our budget situation, so that discussion can continue to wait. We do want discussion of the September 2020 board retreat, and that is to confirm that the dates that have been proposed. And I want to say how much I appreciate this concept of the board meeting for two days and then having staff meet in retreat for a day to be able to put into action the things that have been discussed in the board retreat. I think that will fix a link that has been missing in the, in the past and will just improve the communication between. and will just improve the communication between staff and the board, as well as bringing in the department heads into the retreat. I think that's a good plan. So I did survey the board. I think the 23rd and 24th are clear with board members, if I recall correctly, so we can proceed with plans. I know that I did, in my agenda meeting with Greg, we talked about this just a little bit, and they are working on a site where we can socially distance and do all the things that we need to do, even in a retreat. So I appreciate that. The other piece of that is the facilitator that has been recommended, and this is someone that Greg is familiar with, our interim manager is familiar with and recommends to us. I would offer that it continues probably to be a good idea to have fresh eyes and fresh voices in the work that we're doing, and I would like to see us proceed with that, unless the board has objection to using that facilitator. No? Okay. Great. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is discussion of the search firm selection. And I had surveyed the board, and three, three of those firms rose to the, to the top with a fair bit of distance in the scoring between those three and the other two. Commissioner Fuller, what you, you gave me two choices and didn't say anything about the other three, so I gave both of them a one and the others a five. And so that was, that was how that little bit of scoring worked out. But it didn't really change the fact that there were two, two choices, two or three choices that were at the top. And I suggested to you in an email perhaps that we use our mid-month meeting date as an option, since we should have had it blocked out, as an option for us to do those interviews in the afternoon in a format very similar to what we did for the interim manager, which would be those arrangements would all be made, we'd have those interviews scheduled, they would appear by Zoom, and we would get through those in an afternoon, and hopefully, I'll also be able to make a decision with them. And that would be my recommendation to you, subject to detailed timing, to probably start that in the mid-afternoon, sort of a three, make sure we're finished before six, including some deliberation time earlier. Two to five? Two to five. Greg, can you make those arrangements to, to set those three firms up with interview time, break between them, deliberation time at the end, so that we're finished by 5 o'clock?
Mr. Mayor, just to point out, I would not be available on that date, but I don't think you need me for the interviews with the search firm.
Yes, sir, I think the manager can handle that this time. Good.
Is that an opportunity for a closed session, or is that an open session?
As far as selecting, hiring and selecting that firm would be an open session item, just like the contractor.
So we would advertise that as a meeting?
Well, unless you adjourn from today, I'm sorry, recess from today to that.
Right. Well, that's what we'll do, if somebody will help me remember. I am notorious for forgetting this, that we will recess this meeting to the.
19th at 2:00.
19th at 2:00 p.m. Thank you. Before we go, well, no, I think we're ready for the attorney at this point. And Mr. Lighty, do you want to tell us, say, do we have this?
Mr. Mayor, I've been instructed to go to the microphone for any further lengthy conversations I might have. I request that the board enter closed session pursuant to North County General Statute 143-318.11A3 in order to confer with the town attorney regarding matters within the attorney-client privilege and to preserve that privilege, including to a discussion of the Blackburn litigation, as well as pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A6 in order to discuss one or more confidential personnel matters.
Thank you. Can somebody?
Make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. The board will be in closed session. The board has returned to open session. Mr. Lighty, will you report on the closed session, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The board did discuss the pending litigation matter with the town attorney, as well as other potential legal matters. Some action was taken, but no further details need to be reported at this time.
All right. Thank you. Is there other business to come before the board, before we adjourn?
Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn.
A motion and a second to adjourn? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Meeting adjourned.